Welcome to the Spark Live webinar series, one component of our Spark Knowledge Mobilisation Programme. Spark is Children's Healthcare Canada's shared platform for advocacy, research and knowledge. Spark Live is where we gather each week to curate, convene and showcase excellence and innovation from across the child and youth healthcare community. Our goal is to spark conversation, ideas and action. Children's Healthcare Canada would like to thank our funding partners for their ongoing contributions that support all of our programmes and activities, including this Spark Live bi-weekly webinar series. There are two options to join in on the live conversation. Questions and comments for our panel or presenters can be typed into the question box, or comments that you want to share with the audience can be typed into the chat box visible to all of our attendees. For those of you on Twitter, tag @childhealthcan on any webinar related tweets, or use the hashtag #SparkLive. And to keep up to date on all of Children's Healthcare Canada's webinars and other activities, be sure to sign up for our weekly Spark News e-Bulletin by visiting our website at childhealthcan.ca.
Hello everyone, and welcome to another edition of Children's Healthcare Canada's Spark Live webinar series. The Spark theme for March is Child Health Across the Continuum of Care. I'm Michelle Batia, your host for the next hour. Children's Healthcare Canada acknowledges that our offices located in Ottawa are on the unceded, unsurrounded territory of the Algonquin and Ashnabik people. We recognise and deeply appreciate their historic connection to this place. We also recognise the contributions that Métis, Inuit and other Indigenous peoples have made in shaping and strengthening this community, our province and the country. We are delighted to speak with Dr Linda Bakovic and Michelle Probowazansky to bring you collaborative school-based paediatric medicine in the north, a strength-based approach. Before we begin, we invite you to answer a few quick poll questions for us. Please note that you will have to answer all three questions to submit your response. Thank you for participating. Now, I would like to introduce our speakers for today. Dr Linda Bakovic completed her medical degree at the Northern Ontario School of Medicine in 2010, and completed her paediatrics residency at Alberta Children's Hospital prior to returning to Thunder Bay, where she has been a practising consulting paediatrician since 2014. In her work in Thunder Bay, she maintains a full-time position with Thunder Bay Regional Consulting Pediatrics, which includes a full-time outpatient consulting practice in addition to participating in inpatient hospital work. Level 2 C NICU and on-call services, including phone and transport assistance to the northwestern Ontario region. She also maintains a regular outreach clinic to Sioux Lookout, Ontario, where she provides consultative paediatric services to Sioux Lookout and northern remote First Nations. Dr Bakovic has been the Chief of Paediatrics in Thunder Bay since 2022. She became interested in school-based medicine through meeting many patients who struggle within the school system and managing the silos of care between healthcare and education. An educator for 25 years, Michelle Probowazansky is a Superintendent of Education at the Lakehead District School Board in Thunder Bay. Before this role, she held the positions of both elementary and secondary principal. She holds a Master's Degree in Education from OZI, University of Toronto, where her major research project focused on the area of relational bullying. She is a trainer in restorative practices and has completed extensive research on the culture of strengths. Michelle has contributed to several articles and chapters about the power of strengths practices contributing to student success. Michelle believes in the power of relationships and positive leadership to transform systems. During the presentation, we welcome you to converse in the chat box and type your questions in the Q&amp;A box, which you will post at the end of the webinar. It is now my pleasure to pass the mic to Linda.
Thanks, Michelle, and thanks everyone for joining us today. We're so excited for the opportunity to be able to share our work with you. This is something that we have both been very passionate about and have really found a lot of rewards in doing this kind of work, so we're excited to share it with you. So I'm Linda, this is Michelle.
Hi, everyone.
And our learning objectives for today. First, we hope that you'll understand the importance of collaboration in a social paediatrics model to address the needs of underserviced children, particularly those who struggle in school. We hope by the end of this that you'll be able to access a strengths assessment inventory to produce a strengths profile for children, and that you'll consider implementing a strengths-focused practice model to assess and treat underserviced children in your practice.
I think we would be remiss if we didn't begin this presentation by acknowledging the land on which we are situated here in Thunder Bay, Ontario. We are located on the traditional territory of the Jibway people of Fort William First Nation, signatory to the Robinson Superior Treaty of 1850. We acknowledge all of the First Nations, Métis and Inuits who reside in this territory and across our great nation. We're committed to moving forward in the spirit of reconciliation and respect for all Canadians. I am grateful today to have woken up to some sunny weather here in Thunder Bay, and as I look out, I feel a connection to the land each and every day, whether it's rainy, snowy. We are very lucky here in Thunder Bay to have four very distinct seasons, and so today with the sun shining, I was grateful to come here and present all of you.
So we'll begin by sharing a little bit about the city where we live and work. So we're joining you today from Thunder Bay, Ontario, the second largest city in northern Ontario, second to Sudbury, which although we're both located in northern Ontario, Sudbury's actually a 12-hour drive from where we are. So northern Ontario is a very vast landmass, it comprises approximately 60% of all of Ontario, and we have a population in the city of Thunder Bay of about 110,000 people, with a catchment of about double that, 230,000 people in the area. As Michelle mentioned, we have beautiful geography here in Thunder Bay, and this is one of our, I guess, most celebrated views that I'm showing you on the slide today of the Sleeping Giant, beautiful mass of mountain that people hike. We're on the shores of Lake Superior, which is a beautiful lake where a lot of people that live in Thunder Bay have the opportunity to really bask in all the wonderful geography that surrounds us. The main industries in Thunder Bay are transportation, manufacturing, education and mining and forestry. And like many northern Ontario towns throughout all of Canada, we struggle with the ill effects of the social determinants of health here. We see large proportions of our population in Thunder Bay that struggle with poverty, that struggle with insecure housing, that struggle with drug abuse, and that struggle with access to appropriate and timely healthcare when people need it. So these are all sort of challenges that our patients face and the children in our school system face, and a lot of these challenges are what brought forth the work that we're sharing with you today. We are fortunate in Thunder Bay to be home to Thunder Bay Regional Health Sciences Centre, a tertiary care hospital that houses patients from across our region when they need it. And we're also fortunate to be home to the Northern Ontario School of Medicine University, Canada's first independent medical school. So this is a bit of the landscape of paediatric medicine in Thunder Bay. So here you have a picture of five paediatricians that live and work in Thunder Bay, there's a total of nine of us, and as I mentioned, we serve a catchment of about 230,000 people in approximately 60% of Ontario's landmass. I found the next statistic fascinating, so our paediatrician-to-person ratio in Thunder Bay is approximately 1 to almost 26,000 compared to 1 to almost 6,000 in Toronto Central. So we certainly have a lot of patients that we're responsible for, and patients of quite high need based on the geography where we live. As I mentioned in the previous slide, we're home to Thunder Bay Regional Health Sciences Centre, and the paediatricians in Thunder Bay all share in hospital services equally. So we staff a 12-bed paediatric ward, a 12-bed level 2 NICU. Our paediatric group is responsible for outreach services in our surrounding area, and despite the fact that you see a lot of places listed here, including Sioux Lookout, Fort Frances, multiple First Nations, the needs far outweigh what we're able to provide with the numbers that we have. We all have community consulting practices, we all participate in diabetes health clinics, developmental clinics, a healthy living clinic, we have a hematology clinic locally, staffed by one of our paediatricians, and we all provide medical behavioural and mental health consultation to the patients in our catchment. When I first started working in Thunder Bay in 2014, I was the sixth paediatrician to join. We're now fortunate to have nine, and in fact, there's a 10th paediatrician who's living and working in our area who's not a part of our APP. So when I joined the group in Thunder Bay, the average wait time for behavioural consultation was approaching almost two years, and currently our average wait time for behavioural consultation is six to 12 months, which is better, but still for patients waiting for these services, it's an awful long time to wait.
I'll tell you a little bit about Lakehead District School Board. As you see on the screen, I have attached the strategic plan, just a little glimpse of it at the bottom. Feel free at some point later to click on the full strategic plan and take a look, as well as a summary of the student identity data for our school board. We are the largest board in northwestern Ontario and act as a hub for many First Nations communities. Many children come to school in Thunder Bay, they do not have secondary schools in First Nations communities, and a lot of the First Nations communities around us, and so students come to Thunder Bay and live in boarding homes to be able to attend high school. We have approximately 8,900 students, 22 elementary schools that are K-8, including three dual-track French immersion schools. There are three secondary schools, and within those three secondary schools, we run a very successful international baccalaureate programme. We are lucky here in Thunder Bay, other places within the province charge to attend an international baccalaureate programme, we don't, and so students are able to attend that programme for free. French immersion programme in one of our schools, as well as advanced placement. We have a very robust adult education centre, we graduate many adults who return to school later in life and are quite proud of the work that we do in that centre. We have a renowned outdoor education centre, of course, where we are situated in Thunder Bay, it makes it quite a beautiful site. Students go to the outdoor education centre for day trips, as well as a residential overnight stays, and learn so many wonderful land-based lessons from the instructors that are at the education centre. We also run a Lakehead International, so we have students who come from many different countries in the world and attend school here in Thunder Bay in order to have the experience of northwestern Ontario. We have close to 2,000 staff members, both permanent and casual. The five pillars of our strategic plan are reconcile, belong, achieve, lead and inspire, and this collaborative clinic touches on so many goals within each of those pillars. We are so proud to be a partner in this paediatric clinic and to be able to serve for all of the students in our school board and ensuring student success.
Okay, so this next slide will not be a surprise to those audience members that are healthcare providers. So I wanted to spend some time talking about what the traditional pathway looks like for students who struggle in the school system secondary to a medical, mental health or behavioural concern. During this slide, I'll highlight some of the assumptions that we make in our traditional healthcare system that disadvantages the most marginalised patients that we serve. So in the traditional pathway, if a child is struggling in school, teachers will note these struggles, some interventions will occur at a school-based level in order to try to help those children to achieve, and if those interventions are not adequate and the children continue to struggle, then those concerns are brought forward and shared with the parents. One of the assumptions that we make here in this first step is that parents will take these concerns from the school seriously and believe, based on those shared concerns, that their child needs diagnosis, management or healthcare in order to address the next steps in their path. So if that does happen, parents will often make an appointment with their primary healthcare provider, and unfortunately, due to a lot of unmet needs in terms of primary healthcare delivery in our community, this can often take three to six months or more. We also assume in this step that a child has a primary healthcare provider, which in our community, there are large numbers of people who don't. So without a primary healthcare provider, families would at this point have to access a walk-in clinic. We also assume at this point that parents have the resources to be able to get to appointments, so transportation to get to appointments, which a lot of our catchment struggles with, as well as childcare for other children, the ability to take time off work, which is also a challenge. And we also assume that parents are able to understand and adequately relay information provided by the school to their primary healthcare provider to such a degree that it prompts further referrals for management. So assuming that all of this is true, the primary healthcare provider will then make a referral to a paediatrician for assessment. In our community, as I mentioned in the previous slide, there is quite a wait time particularly for behavioural concerns, and this can take six to 18 months, this next step. So then, in a traditional healthcare model, the paediatrician would see the child for an initial consultation. They may choose to have rating skills filled out in order to help with the diagnostic pathway, and they often request parents to get collateral information from the school, things like report cards or to ask specific questions about the child's performance at school to inform the rest of the diagnostic pathway. Again, in this step, we're assuming that parents have access to computers and internet and the literacy in order to be able to complete some of the online rating skills that we use. And then a paediatrician would book a follow-up appointment to review this information. At the follow-up appointment, we would review all of the rating skills that are completed and the collateral information, and hopefully at that point a diagnosis can be made and medical treatment can be initiated if it's indicated. Within the next one to two months, we hope that parents will share this medical information with the school, and that using this information, the school is able to make educational accommodations to be able to assist the child in the next step. So at this stage, we're assuming that parents are willing to share that information back and forth between the medical system and the education system, and that they're able to relay that information adequately to inform both the diagnostic process and the educational accommodations that are needed for the child. And then on an ongoing basis, we rely on parents to serve as the intermediate step between relaying information back and forth from paediatrician to school as management plans change and to gauge the success of the child going forward. We assume throughout the entire traditional pathway that parents are knowledgeable about the healthcare system and the education system to an extent that they are capable of advocating for their child at every step in this pathway.
So that brings us to the problem, the problem that drives what we do in this clinic. As Dr Bakovic just explained, the assumptions are many, and the problem is big because that sounds like a pretty difficult process for a family to go through in order for their child to be successful at school. Most often, the most vulnerable children who need the paediatric medicine, the most are the ones who struggle to access the care. So these children often struggle with both academic and social expectations at school, and the teachers and the school staff are the first to bring those concerns to the parents and the families and the guardians. The assumptions that are made regarding what a family is capable of, how they are able to get the help that they need, is very limiting, and it's not only limiting for the family, but also for the school system in general. With staff who only want to work together with parents and guardians in collaboration in order to meet the needs of the student and provide equity of outcomes for all, but those limitations really prevent, sometimes stop things altogether from proceeding, and so children end up, or previously would end up, falling through the cracks. Because education and healthcare systems are so siloed, both rely, both the education and the healthcare rely on the parents. And so again, we go back to all of the assumptions that are made of people's ability to actually carry through with a process that's in place. This further increases the divide in health and educational outcomes for students and children of families who struggle with the social determinants of health. Having seen marginalised children over my career, taking the opportunity to work on a team such as this was critical for me, I felt that if you show that this is important work from the very top down, then people understand that you mean it, that we actually care for the students and for the outcomes, and that we want to work together in collaboration to provide a wraparound approach for students. We can't expect a student to achieve in school if they have unmet needs. I've seen time and time again the difference it makes in a child's success at school when all parties are working together towards their success and towards a common goal. Everyone involved in a child's life has to come together, come to the table and discuss what will work and what doesn't work. We need to look at a child's strengths, what they bring to our school community, what they bring to the community at large every single day, and that's why we incorporated a strength-based approach into our clinic work for both home and school, and we'll speak about that a little bit later. So our team, our amazing team, consists of, of course, Dr Linda Bakovic, so we have that medical perspective, we have Dr Edward Rowanah, he is our school board psychologist, so we have that psychological perspective, there's me. So we have an educational perspective, as well as the special education principal Maggie Frederickson, who brings a wealth of knowledge in the special education realm. Michaela Coachmelio is an incoming NOSA medical student who offers us assistance in research, and all of us are co-investigators on a research project based on this clinic as well. So we are a collaborative team, and we know that working together leads to improvement in student success, both at home and at school.
Okay, so in contrast to the slide that I presented above, this is how our paediatric clinic pathway works. So if a child is struggling in school, the school board obviously has many strategies in place to help children that are at risk and that are struggling, and by the time the step occurs where these concerns are shared with parents, the school board has put into place already many resources to assist these children. If a child is still not achieving expectations, these concerns are shared with the parents, and at that time, the school is having a conversation with the parents and seeking consent for direct referral to our in-house paediatric clinic. Once consent is obtained from the family, the referral is sent to my office for triaging. I receive approximately four to eight referrals per month. I triage these referrals and see patients within one to two months. The child will present to my clinic and receive initial consultation, just like any other child referred by any healthcare provider. Also concurrently, our school board psychologist, Dr Rowanah, will review the child, observe them at school, review school information, as well as their Ontario student record, and within one to four weeks from this appointment, the collaborative clinic meeting takes place. I want to pause here for just a moment and sort of let you know how important it is and how much we value parents or guardians' willingness to continue to be a part of this clinic at every step. So despite the fact that consent is sought at the initial step from the school, I also do a consent-seeking process at my office. So if for any reason, parents do not choose to share information between the medical and education system, that's certainly their right, and they can halt this process at any stage. So if they were to choose to halt the process during our initial consultation, their child would proceed ahead as a patient of mine according to the traditional pathway, and we would not have a collaborative clinic at that time. It has only happened on one occasion, so most parents are very eager to have a collaborative clinic meeting about their child. Within approximately one to three months from the time of the initial referral, we have a collaborative clinic meeting, these take place once a month here at the school board, and for the first 30 minutes, we meet with our clinic team in addition to the school team for a particular child. So either their school principal, or their teacher, or a special education facilitator, or any combination of those people will attend the school board to share their perspectives on how the child is functioning in the school board and what their ideas are for how we should move forward. I share my formulation from a medical perspective with the team, Dr Rowanah, our psychologist, shares his formulation, and together with the whole team, we come up with a plan to address some of the concerns that we have for the child. We do that in the first 30 minutes. In the subsequent 30 minutes, we invite the parents to join us, and we modify this plan according to the parents' wishes, and we surround the family with a community that's there to put their child first. And this has been a very powerful, a very powerful action that we're able to do for parents and much appreciated, and we're able to show that this large number of professionals that all have some knowledge of their child want to work together with the family to put a treatment plan forward. One other thing I'd like to mention at this stage, some of these children end up with a medical diagnosis that may require medication, further investigation or medical treatment. I try to defer those kinds of conversations back to my office. So if we decide at a collaborative clinic that perhaps the medication may be considered, I bring the family back to my office within a few weeks' time, and I have that discussion as I would with any other patient, giving them the opportunity to consent or ask questions and explain the benefits and risks back in the traditional medical home model. Ongoing medical management and follow-ups are provided by myself through my clinic, and these patients remain a part of my practice if they need to be, and follow-up collaborative clinic meetings can be arranged on an as-needed basis if consent is provided by parents. We're able to assess four to six patients per month in this clinic pathway, and what used to take us years to achieve for children, we're now able to do within three to six months.
And this is a sample of our referral form, and so if a school and parents collaboratively feel like the best direction to move is our clinic, this will be filled in by the school team. But I wanted to note that we really took the time to understand what we needed on this form. So you'll note the middle question, what are the strengths that this child demonstrates at school? We want parents to understand this isn't a deficit model, we are not doing this because of all the things that their child is not doing. We're doing this because of all the great things about their child and how we can emphasise those great things and promote student success. So this is a quick little look at our form.
So as we started proceeding with this clinic, we were able to achieve a lot of great things, but a new problem came to light, and that was hesitancy to take part in the programme from some families. So as you might imagine, children who struggle in school often have a long history of having concerns being brought forward to parents, parents feeling judged, feeling as though they're always receiving negative feedback, and there's a lot of shame associated with that. It can be difficult for some of these families to enter a room filled with professionals when their perspective is that we're going to share further negative feedback about their child, and they're placed in a defensive posture as a result. So this brought us to our next solution.
And so that's where we decided that we would look at a strength-based approach in our clinic. And so I just want to give you a quick history of a strengths approach in our schools at Lakehead District School Board, beginning roots around 2008, 2009. Dr Rowanah, who was our school board psychologist then as well, had been doing extensive research into strengths practice. So the theory was there, how strengths could really, looking at someone's strengths could really be a protective factor when looking at how we can further student success. And so what we did was started a longitudinal study at McKellar Park Central Public School here, and looking at how increasing or emphasising the self-identified strengths of a student would act as a protective factor in behavioural concerns we were seeing in the school, and we had some very good results. What you see on your screen is just a quick, you know, a couple of strategies that were used. Every classroom had a strengths wall, which you'll see at the bottom of your page, a strengths in motion wall, where students identified what they felt really strongly about themselves. I'm good at art and I'm a good soccer player, and those were up in every room, so kids could see, not only about themselves but about others, what was great about them. And then the little picture above, our strengths, that's, you'll see some layering there where students were actually contributing at what they felt about their friends. So, you know, Kyron might feel that he's really great at soccer, but his friend or another student in the class thinks he's also really good at art. And so those were things that we did within that school, and we've extended that throughout our work in all of our schools at Lakehead District School Board way back since then. Dr Rowanah has always, we did a lot of presentations. Um, uh, Dr. Ruwana has always, uh, we did a lot of presentations then and throughout the years. And Dr. Ruwana has always said that in order for people to feel um, good about themselves, they have to wake up every morning and feel valued, competent, trusted and hopeful every day. And that's what we try to instill in all of our schools. Um, you'll see a, a drum group uh, displayed here. Um, students who feel that that is one of their strengths, find uh, a place in a school to be a part of the drum group and go out into the community and share that with everyone. Um, we have community partners coming into our school. The second picture is an art community partner doing art with a young student who uh, identifies that as one of their strengths. Another picture there, that student made their own ribbon skirt with another community partner. And the final picture is uh, our students doing announcements. So giving children jobs, ways to shine, um, and adding um, to the fabric of a school really changes uh, from a deficit model to a strengths model. And then again, just wanting to emphasize going out into the community. And I know that that's part of what we're doing here is talking about collaboration and how we come together as a community for the betterment of all children. And so this drum group, um, they went to another school and displayed their skills. Um, we work with Thunder Bay Police um, in training students how to be, uh, how to do archery. And that's happening in another, number of our schools. And these students at the bottom of this um, this slide, they're building a canoe together as a community. And they'll be giving back to the community, um, reciprocity, one of the four Rs, reciprocity, respect, relevance and responsibility. Um, and they were, they will be giving this canoe once done, um, they'll be giving it to the Manitou Mountains National Historical Site. So the strengths assessment inventory really quickly um, was created by Dr. Ed Ruwana, our school board psychologist and Dr. Keith Bronley. Um, I, as I said, they did extensive research on the cultural strengths. They created this inventory that can be completed by either the youth themselves or an observer, as well as it can consider multi-sites, homeschool, daycare, et cetera. Um, it highlights the capacity of children to maximize their potential, so to improve their lives and deal with difficult events. So they fill in this assessment inventory or someone does it for them. And it gives us an idea of a wide range of strengths that the child um, both identifies uh, both themselves and that are valued by both the individual and society. Um, presenting the information of identified strengths um, in the variety of domains helps people who work with the child see where they can actually um, hone in on what they need to do, where they need to focus. Because really, you only become better at something when you, you develop something you're really good at. Um, when you always are constantly looking at what you, what you're not good at, it takes a whole lot longer to become better at that. And so when you're working on something you're really good at, you're actually emphasizing your self-esteem and working uh, within um, a culture of strengths helps you to see that you do contribute every day to um, the environment that you're in. So if we look at what we get out of, uh, this is a sample of uh, what someone would fill in, uh, strengths at school, strengths at home, and there's a variety of other domains. Um, so I arrive on time for school, I show I care about people in my family. And in the end, uh, the data is summarized. And so that if we are looking at it together, we're able to see where that child identifies that they feel the best about themselves. So this particular uh, data shows that the student feels good about um, their strengths at home. So perhaps they're really good at keeping themselves clean, um, and cleaning their room and loving their family members. Uh, they're good at being uh, good friends and they find strength in their faith and culture. And so we would look at this and then decide on how we could emphasize those strengths in a school setting. So at this particular, at our particular clinic, we have the parents complete the uh, strengths assessment inventory at the pediatric appointment. And then also the principals and school staff complete one. So we have both multi-sites and multi-vues on the strengths. And then we compare the two to see where do we intersect, what can we focus on? And then during the professional meeting of the clinic, we look at that uh, and discuss it and come up with a plan as to how we could approach uh, any of the behavioral concerns or uh, that the student is struggling with at home and at school. And then we would complete it again at the six-month mark and finally at the twelve-month mark.
So in the last few minutes of our uh, time together, um, I, we hope to share a case example that shows this plan in action. So um, this is, uh, this case is a compilation of uh, many different cases that we've seen through our clinic and I think that it illustrates it well. Um, so we're looking at a seven-year-old student, A R, um, who's in the second grade. Um, this uh, student is very bright and academically capable and used to love school. Uh, but a school referral came through, um, and the concerns noted were increased absences, increased behavioral outbursts, running away and screaming. Um, this behavior was alienating uh, this child's peers and uh, she was having trouble focusing and completing her work independently. So in a traditional model, um, after my assessment of this child, I might come up with the following issues. Query ADHD, query O D D, query anxiety. And my plan to deal with this would be to have uh, the family and the school complete uh, SNAP four forms. Um, come up with a behavioral support plan for the school and recommend counseling or parenting support uh, to the parent at home. Looking however, at the strengths assessment inventory for the student, they had a lot of strengths in the domains of home, friends and faith and culture. And specifically, when we look at the data, um, we can see the areas of strength highlighted. So um, the student shows that she cares about other people in her family, et cetera. Um, strengths in faith and culture are highlighted and strengths with friends.
So when we actually take the data, look at it as the professional group, um, we identify the strengths as Linda just said. And then we come up with a plan. So for example, in this one, this, because this child is in grade two, so probably uh, seven or eight, we would talk about the fact that there would be power in doing social stories uh, with mom at night. Um, a lot about friends and a lot about family because she finds strength in that. And the social stories, walking through a variety of different situations that the student had been encountering at school that perhaps might create that reaction to run away or to alienate or to hide under a desk. And so talking through those every night, but incorporating where, where the child's strengths are into the story, so they feel really good about themselves. Another way, uh, another thing that we would suggest at home and at school would be having strengths boards. So that would be a board just for the student that you would put up on the wall that would say, um, you know, Jane is good at, and then the child comes up with the things that they feel really good at and mom or dad or guardian add to that. And referring to that every day, referring to it at home and referring to it at school. So everyone's speaking the same language, so that the student feels valued and trusted every day and competent when they get up in the morning. And so that constant reminder before you go to school, these are the things you're good at, let's not forget, and drawing their attention to that. And then of course, at school, we think it's really important to give uh, leadership roles and/or jobs in the school so that you change the way that other students and staff view the student. And so when you look, work with someone's strengths, um, give them a job in the office or they're delivering the milk or they're collecting the money for pizza day, um, that changes uh, from being the student who's running away or the student who's hiding under the desk to the student who gets trusted enough to collect the money every week for pizza.
So this strengths-focused model um, gives us a really positive perspective in dealing with the student and the family. And of course, any medical concerns can be dealt with as they normally would at my office. Um, but this gives us a really positive perspective with which to deal with the situation. So um, we came up with a research project, the use of strengths-focused assessment approach in a collaborative education-based pediatric clinic. This is a prospective qualitative and quantitative study. And we're hoping for thirty participants over two years or about halfway there now. Um, we're comparing strengths assessment inventories at the initial pediatric appointment and six months later, looking at school functioning as well as the parent and school satisfaction with our clinic process. And we were fortunate uh, to be awarded a Noamah Clinical Innovation Opportunities Grant in twenty twenty um, that has helped to support our project.
So just to circle back to the impact that we are having on the community. As I already said, introducing a strength-based approach uh, in multiple uh, spaces such as school and at home, um, but in collaboration with healthcare has wide-reaching uh, effects. We see children who feel more confident, who feel good about uh, their contributions to both homeschool and the community. They recognize the gifts they bring to the community and those gifts that they can give back. And they wake up every day feeling hopeful, valued, competent and trusted. So one particular student um, from the pediatric clinic um, just reported from his school that he joined a drum group, he had just uh, went to the local um, or his family of school's high school to um, drum on a brand-new drum that that uh, program had just um, created. And so the, the principal said the difference in the student from pre-clinic to when we discussed uh, the strengths and how we could uh, use those strengths at home and at school to now is, is noticeable. And so we just hope that everything that we do not only contributes to um, a change at school and at home, but also a giving back to our community of Thunder Bay.
Okay, so um, we have a little bit of time now for questions, um, but just before we finish, um, we want to thank you so much for your attendance and attention to this. Um, as you can see, we feel very passionate about the work that we do here and we're very proud of the outcomes that we've been able to achieve so far. Um, so we hope that um, in whatever, in whatever way you can, um, based on the work that you do, that um, you're able to uh, to see the strengths-focused approach as a potential strategy, particularly in dealing with marginalized children. Um, and most importantly, um, that you're able to see through our work um, how uh, collaboration and trying to break down the silos um, that prevent um, children from uh, achieving success uh, is, is such an effective strategy. So um, looking at different sectors and seeing how we can combine forces and use our uh, combined expertise um, to provide care to children uh, in ways that they haven't experienced it before. Um, so our email addresses are both listed here. We would love to um, answer any questions, provide any advice or collaborate um, with any of you in your settings um, to try to further our work. So we appreciate your attention and are open to questions.
Thank you so much, Linda and Michelle, for this uh, really engaging presentation. It's such a wonderful initiative and it really highlights uh, the importance of the integration between uh, the school board and the healthcare team. And it really puts kids and their caregivers in the center. So that's really, really wonderful to see. Um, and we do have a few questions that have come in, um, but just before uh, we jump to questions, um, we just asked that you uh, quickly fill out this uh, poll um, to help us continue our uh, SPARC program. So you have to select and answer for all five questions uh, before submitting a response. Perfect. Thank you so much for your feedback, everyone. So now we'll move on to our Q and A. Um, so, so Erin has asked, do you, uh, do you have or have you considered using telehealth for any step um, of the process?
Um, so we haven't used telehealth in particular, um, but as we're all well aware, uh, during COVID, uh, our familiarity and use of um, technology to provide healthcare uh, has increased, you know, in ways that I think we never could have imagined before. Uh, so we have had um, a couple of families uh, that have chosen to join us via, via virtual means um, for the uh, collaborative clinic portion um, uh, of, of our conversation. Um, I do do all of the uh, pediatric appointments in person, um, as I do actually for all of my initial pediatric consultations. Um, because uh, I, I think the physical exam uh, is quite important to me for these initial appointments uh, to make sure that I'm not missing anything else. Um, but uh, I certainly would be open uh, to considering uh, this option um, if it uh, helped to meet the needs of a particular patient.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Uh, so our next question comes from Carly and she's wondering if it takes any pediatrician time away uh, from far north communities who are within Northwestern Ontario but not Lakehead District School Board? And is there a plan to incorporate these schools in the program uh, in the future?
That's an excellent question and that's something that we have been thinking about uh, quite a lot. So um, as, as I tried to emphasize in one of the initial slides, Northern Ontario is a really huge place and um, certainly one pediatrician um, can't do it all. So um, this happens to be the collaboration um, that I've chosen and, and it's worked really well. But we're open to uh, collaborating with uh, other school boards uh, or other schools in our area to try to mentor a similar process um, for other, um, not even pediatricians, but physicians to be able to work more collaboratively with the education systems um, in other areas. So um, we hope and you know, through sharing this work with all of you, um, we, we really hope to inspire further collaborations uh, for other uh, school boards with uh, with healthcare uh, resources in their community to be able to provide these services for other children. And I agree, I mean, when I, when I first uh, started doing this work, the thing that drove me the most was minimizing the length of time. Um, and certainly we have been able to achieve that in a very rewarding way. Um, so we hope to mentor other groups to be able to do this kind of work as well.
Great. So our next question is from Kirsten and she's curious about the steps it took to get this clinic started. And if there's any advice you would give for clinicians that are struggling to connect with school system?
I'm so excited to get a question from a resident. Um, I, I think it's so exciting um, that you're interested in community pediatrics and that um, at a, at a very sort of pivotal stage in your career, that you're looking to collaboration um, to help to solve problems for your future patients. So um, I'll, I'll tell you sort of a, a brief story. I was a resident in Calgary, um, and I worked with a phenomenal pediatrician, uh, Dr. Roxanne Goldade, in case any of you know her. Um, and uh, she really mentored me in seeking collaborations um, to help children. So she started a program called P K I C H, Pediatrics for Kids in Care, through collaborative work with the uh, foster care system in Calgary. And this program um, has, has been going on for many, many years. There are now many pediatricians involved and they help to service all children uh, that are in the foster care system uh, in Calgary. That work inspired me so much, um, and seeing how uh, a simple, you know, coffee table discussion with a member um, with, with a, a partner in um, in foster care led to such a collaboration and led to helping so many children, um, really inspired me in this kind of work as well. So you know, we work in silos with all sorts of community partners, but where my patients spend the majority of their time is at school. So um, that's why I sought out this collaboration, um, and having, you know, this relationship with Michelle and with Lakehead Public Schools, um, with Dr. Ruwana, it's taught me so much about ways to approach children in my practice. Um, I, you know, we learn a lot in medicine and you're learning a lot in your residency, I'm sure, about how to care for children medically. But um, getting to work with experts in education and experts in psychology um, has made me such, and it's such a better doctor than I was before. Um, and they've been phenomenal teachers, so I encourage your work in collaboration in the future.
Great. So our next question um, comes from Leanna and she's asking, how can I take a further look at the strengths-based assessment? Um, because she thinks that would be great um, for, and something that she could really incorporate into um, a parallel program in Calgary.
Oh, it's so nice to have someone from Cope on here. So I worked with Cope as a resident as well, um, and that helped to inspire some of the work that I'm doing here now. So um, we did gloss through it sort of quickly, um, but uh, the website is W W W dot strengthassessment.ca. Um, you can Google that or Google strengths assessment inventory. Um, and anyone can access these uh, strengths assessment inventories created by uh, Dr. Ruwana and Keith Bronley.
Perfect. And just as a follow-up to that, she's also asked, uh, you, Dr. Bukovic, how many students from Lakehead do you have at any given time and do you have a regular practice as well?
I'm sorry, uh, regular practice. Oh, I do, yes. So I work a, a full-time, uh, one point O F T E as a community consulting pediatrician. Um, and I think uh, when you say students from Lakehead, um, I, I think you maybe mean medical students or undergraduate students. So um, I, I, I hold an associate professorship with NOSAM University. Um, and constantly I have residents uh, and medical students from NOSAM University working with me. Whenever they have the ability um, in their schedules, I invite them to be a part of our clinic and we've had many, many learners come through. Um, it's, it's a part of uh, my work that I'm very passionate about and I love to share that passion with my learners. So um, certainly if there are any learners listening that want to come to Thunder Bay and see what we do, um, I'd be more than happy um, to have you come on board and you can access any um, clinical electives through the NOSAM University website.
Wonderful. Thank you. So our next question comes from uh, Daniella and she's asked, are there initiatives in place to capture strengths and weaknesses prior to entry to school or immediately at school entry to try to catch issues earlier that are so foundational after underlying later behavioral, academic and mental health issues that arise in the early, in the early grade?
Yeah, thanks Daniella. There definitely um, are things in place. We have a variety of community partnerships. Yeah, thanks Daniela. There definitely um are things in place. We have a variety of community partnerships. Um, and there are assessments that are done for our little ones who are coming into kindergarten year one or kindergarten year two, depending on when they're coming in. But we also, all of our schools do use the Strengths Assessment Inventory when needed and would capture strengths in that way as well.
I'm sorry, Michelle, I'm just noticing uh Leanna posted a follow up to her question. She meant, she meant patient referrals from the school board. Um, so we see, um, we try to aim for six a month. Um, sometimes it's a little bit less. So uh, on average, four to six patients a month.
Perfect. So uh Erin has asked, what about the inclusion of allied health in the collaborative process? So that could be OT, PT.
Yeah, so we have, we have had uh meetings where parents have brought in um external partners. Um, OT, S L P, PT into the meeting. Uh, everyone is welcome. It is a collaborative approach. Um, and if the school themselves have been uh working on a school based referral for S L P, they would bring uh they're more than welcome and have in the past as well. The principal has brought the S L P that's been working with the student. So um, they're not a part of the core team because they would change uh depending on the student, but they are more than welcome to be a part of the process.
It has been my dream, um, looking at this clinic uh from the beginning um to give the patients that are accessing um our clinic um access to other allied health services that they require um as a core member of our uh clinic group. Um, unfortunately, health resources in our area um are are quite stretched, wait lists are very long. Um, and we haven't been able um to sort of establish that partnership um as a core uh core part of our clinic uh process at this time, but it's certainly something that we would be interested in the future and continuing our collaborative work in our community is something we feel passionate about. So um stay tuned. We might have some of those members in the future.
Wonderful. Thank you, Linda and Michelle as well. So the next question is, what are the biggest wins that you've seen with this collaborative school based model? And I know you mentioned a few uh in your presentation, but I would love to, I'd love to hear any other thoughts.
Um, I can maybe mention um um one case that that sticks out for me. So um, there was a student that uh we met through this process prior to us uh initiating the strengths based framework. And um like I mentioned uh in one of our slides, um, this was a family that uh felt quite hesitant and quite nervous about attending the collaborative clinic as a large group. Um, but uh they were very um very committed to helping their child. And so um, they fought through that fear and they attended uh the clinic and they had a positive experience. Um, but um, this was one of the first instances that I saw uh both Michelle and Dr. Rwanda mention um social stories and a strengths board. Um, and uh, it was very interesting for me as a clinician because for this particular patient, they had already had many healthcare resources in place prior to my involvement. And to be honest, after my initial appointment with the patient, I didn't see how I could help. Um, I, I wasn't sure really what other resources I had. So um, being able to, to work with my partners uh on this clinic and see that expertise come through. Um, and in my follow up with the student, see how um, the student thrived based on uh some of these suggestions that were made that weren't things I learned about in my training and weren't things that the medical system taught me. Um, it left a great impression on me. And the interesting thing is this student slowly faded away from my practice. Um, they um got better and um they stopped booking follow up appointments and um they continued on with their lives. But um, two years later, um, they happened to stop by my clinic um because um, the child was in distress uh and the family didn't have a primary healthcare provider and didn't know where to go. Um, but had had such a positive um experience with our clinic in the past um that they trusted me to help them, even though they had no referral to me and didn't know um really how to access um those services. So we actually had a follow up pediatric clinic that focused on this patient again. Um, and were able to help her to get back on track using the strengths based framework um and to reconnect her to a medical home through my office. Um, the family was very satisfied, the school was very satisfied and I learned so much about um what I know as a pediatrician and what I yet don't know um and how to rely on my colleagues in other sectors um to be able to achieve the best outcome for my patients. So I think that was a really big win for all involved.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for sharing, Linda. So Leanna, I see has a follow up question. Um, who guides the parents through the appointments and helps with the follow up and answers their question?
I do. Um, so um, I do. I receive the referrals at my office and triage them. Um, I have my secretary call the family, but then I am their touch point um for any questions that they may have. Um, we set up the appointments at the collaborative um uh school based clinic at the board during my first visit with them. Um, the school board has been extremely responsive uh to meeting um unique needs of families, um providing transportation, for example, um for families that struggle uh to access that. Um, and you know, we, we do reminders sort of in the morning uh to make sure that families attend that. And then I continue to guide them through any follow up and reengage with the school system as needed um going forward.
Wonderful. Thank you, Linda. So just a last question, um, are there any professionals or organizations that you would like to have as members of your team?
Yeah, thank you. That's a great question. Um, as I mentioned uh previously, um allied health um would be a really great resource to have, particularly for some of our younger um patients um who struggle with speech and language. So having the expertise around the table um would be very helpful. And there are many children in our community um and many children who are part of this clinic who are involved with child welfare. Um, and I think again, um particularly uh in the cultural framework of of where we work, um child welfare has a very negative connotation. Um, but there are a lot of ways uh that the child welfare system can be very helpful to families. Um, so I think um having them as a part of our clinic uh in the future, um for those children that are already connected with them is something that I would love, um because I think that uh it would help us to navigate um that sector uh in a more effective way um and hopefully provide uh even more support for the families that struggle the most.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Linda and Michelle. So that, that is the, the end of our time to that together today, but this has been uh really wonderful and such a great initiative uh that you both are leading. Um, and so thank you so much for sharing your time and expertise with us. And thank you so much to our audience members for joining in. And we really hope that you had to part with some practical knowledge to bring back to your organization. And this recording will be available within one week of the webinar um on our website, um Children's Healthcare Canada. So upcoming on Spark Conversations, watch out for the next episode of the Spark Conversations Podcast Series, Health System Leadership, Leading Beyond Complexities to Effectively Transform Health Systems, which will be launched on May fifteenth. And this episode will involve uh season three podcast host, Doc, Dr. Catherine Smart in conversation with special guest, Dr. Michael Gardner. And on Spark Live on May twenty fourth, we're excited to bring you another webinar in collaboration with the Child Bright, Bright Network, parent partners as investigators on Child Bright Research Project. And on May thirty first, we have our third webinar of the month, Children's Mental Health Research Messages for Informing Policy with Charlotte Waddell, who's the director at the Children's Health Policy Center. And next month, June, uh the spark theme is Child and Youth Mental Health. And we're excited to bring you um some more Spark Live webinars. So stay tuned for details. And thank you so much for joining us today. And thank you so much to Linda and Michelle uh uh for this wonderful presentation. And hopefully we'll see many of you back here in two weeks. Bye, everyone. Thank you.
Hi, thank you.
Thank you.